Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this morning to order at seven AM. And if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Matt Vellormer. I move to approve the agenda with the level of the script error in red text after the agenda item 10.8.1.1, specifically vote for policy. Yep, specifically vote for policy 3260 Business Non-Instructional Operations Sales and disposal of books, equipment, and supplies to acknowledge the superintendent's authorization of the disposal of a steamer at Thomason High School as presented. The Board of Education voted on this action last month, and the action is not related to any item on this month's agenda.
Steve Carr, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Well, I got members of the public press wanting to address the Board of Education. Moving on, can I have an approval for the minutes?
Marie Eldridge, I vote to accept and approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes dated August 15, 2022, as presented.
Matt Vellormer, second.
Corrections on discussion?
Just had a Beth Campbell, sorry, just have a question or a comment on the meeting minutes. When I was reviewing them, I noticed that there was only action items documented in the meeting minutes, but there was no discussion or questions or answers to the questions from last month's meeting. I know it's been like this right along, and I was just curious, is the video recording legal documentation of meeting minutes where, you know, if people are just trying to look quick at the meeting minutes to see what what we talked about, and if there was discussion, they wouldn't see it there. They'd have to go through a two-hour meeting to find the answer.
This is Francine Cross. I'll answer the question. So first of all, we are only required under the law to put the action items in the result of any votes that were taken. The discussion link that is in the minutes should take you right to the spot where the discussion is. So our Board Secretary does a heck of a job finding exactly where that discussion is. So they're not going to have to listen to two hours worth. It'll go right there. I want to make sure that I am depicting that correctly. Yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Marie Eldridge, vote to accept and approve the Special Board of Education meeting minutes dated August 16, 2022, as presented.
Matt Vellormer, second.
Corrections on discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Do we need to abstain if they weren't there? Or no, doesn't matter? No, because that was a special meeting. So it was only the people that were required to be there were there.
Okay. Moving on to our recognitions. Our first was Jennifer Salata, the 22-23 Paraprofessional Honoree for Thomason Public Schools. Our next honoree is our 2022-2023 Teacher of the Year, Cheyenne Clark. Our 22 Education Partner of the Year for the Thomason Education Enrichment Fund is Diane Anaki. And our next group of honors is a very important group that we would like to recognize for their hard work and dedication in getting the blue wing back to the appropriate setting needed for teaching Black Rock School. So we would like to recognize all of the people who were involved in that restoration process. Spencer Luthy, Timothy Ferris, Kana Foss, Christopher O'Keefe, Craig LaFrogue, Patrick Hires, Brian McCarthy, Nicholas Dumart, Jeffrey Dobos, Jose Ratties, Cheyenne Clark, Jennifer DePalma, Julia Cruck, Erica Turlizzi, Kelsey Murzak, Karen Paye, Jennifer Bab, Diana Brandt, Susan Hyler, Jonathan Cosack, Glenn Clark, Erin Heller, David Shapinka, and Mark Flanmigallady. Thank you all very much. But before we resume our meeting, I understand that you all have other obligations in the matter. So if you would like to leave, you may feel free to do so. Thank you very much for coming. Okay. Moving on, I have our presentation from Ms. Podasky.
I'll try not to be too close to the mic because they won't hear me at home. Now, I know some of you heard this at the District Achievement Committee meetings, so I'm going to make it even shorter. But I did want to share that I am sharing these smarter balance scores with much enthusiasm and as always, as one part of the whole child. Thomason Public Schools has been able-
One second, just to kind of interrupt. There's no way I can deliver that last sentence the way that you did.
What do you mean?
With enthusiasm.
With enthusiasm. But definitely as one part of the whole child. Thomason Public Schools has been able to, in many cases, return to our pre-pandemic numbers. As many of you know, the news has been reporting that Connecticut State averages and the Connecticut State averages and their concerns for various subgroups. Learning loss definitely happened last year, but our students were resilient, and they're demonstrating that they can learn when in fact they are taught by their teachers, and the teachers provide the resources that we purchase for them. The state has shared that students in grades three and four were hit pretty hard by the pandemic in language arts and math. Here in Thomason, our third and fourth graders went against the trend and did very well. However, we share the state trend for math in grades seven and eight. As I will share tonight, most of our other grades have returned to pre-2020 numbers, and some in fact have surpassed them. So we are certainly on the upward trend. If you go to the first slide, you will see that I made a comparison between the 2019 school year and the 2021 school year. A reminder that in 2020, we did not test because we were shut down. So that's the year that we skipped. The only grade that went up last year was grade three, and that's why it's in the green. And this is for math. Every other grade went down, and we know why. Next slide. So now this is the comparison of last year's when we plummeted and then this year. So we are certainly on a decent trend. For grade four, incredibly incredible difference. For grade seven and eight, they stayed about the same. And five and six as well. Next slide. If I look at our language arts numbers, again, grade three, five, and six did go up. Everyone else went down. And the next one? From 21 to 22, grade three, four, six, and seven went up in language arts. Five and eight stayed about the same. Again, levels three and four are on grade level and above grade level. So these are the areas that we want our students to be in. Next slide. Our science scores, I put them all on the same slide. We only test in five, eight, and 11. And so for 2021, you see that grade eight was 62%. And in 2022, 52%. Grade five went up from 49 to 63. So they did the best in the science increase. Next slide. So my next steps. This year's focus will be in seventh and eighth grade. We have two new teachers to Thomason High School, and we've talked to them specifically about looking at a new instructional model with stations and workshop model for math. And so I will be in there to facilitate that and to assist them in looking at that instructional model and really just working with them because it is it is different. It's not the same teaching as they've normally done. Our small group instruction is certainly a focus in grades four through eight. We've met with most of the PLCs in those grades already, and we really are making sure that teachers are doing that small group instruction so that they can focus in on the deficits of every student. And that is done when the teacher is doing a whole group instruction that, I'm sorry, when the teacher is teaching whole group and then goes into a small group instruction model, and the rest of the class is working on something independently. So it's really important that at some point during the week, every student is met in a small group so that their needs can be addressed, and the teachers can see what they know and what they don't know. So that's the goal of the small group in a nutshell. Our continued math intervention here at the high school with Ms. Protsman is for seventh and eighth grade. And as I stated in a letter that I sent out to parents, about 60% of our seventh and eighth grade students went up one level in smarter balance if they stayed in the intervention class. Questions? Thank you. Or comments?
Just a quick question with the science one. Because we only test every three years. The 11th is a compared to a different group of kids in 11th grade the year before and the year before, right?
Um, correct. It could be. Some of them are different, but some of the kids do stay in Thomason for five, eight, and 11. So some, most of them are the same. Huh?
Like, when you're comparing the the scores year to year to year, you're not comparing the same kids from eighth grade as in 11th grade because you don't have a four-year overlap?
Correct.
Thank you.
Officer Ethea, I just wanted to say that the papers that you sent home with the test scores were much easier to read this year. So the parents will be able to tell exactly what level they're at with the arrows and the color. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you. And the smarter balance scores did go home as well. For the high school, they went home by mail. For Center School, they went home in their take-home folders. And only I only received one email from a parent that it wasn't received by a fourth grader, and I will email them a copy. So everyone should have gotten a copy by now.
This is Steve Carr. With this data for for a couple of years and stuff, are you able to determine like the progression of the of the kids due to the COVID? If there was a something that we needed to concentrate more on in the latter years that were missed in the previous because of the COVID? To get them up to speed?
What the state is telling us, at least people in my sort of position, is they're they're looking at the learning loss in the grades that it happened, and they're trying to figure out why specifically, let's say, fifth graders struggled the most during the COVID year in that cohort group. So they are keeping track of of that kind of data, and they are disseminating that to us. But, you know, I think good teaching practices are good teaching practices, and we need to continue to focus in on that, focus in on the resources that the kids are getting, their practice. Their social emotional as well, because some of them are really hurting. And, you know, if you're not available to learn up here, then it's very difficult to do algebra. So we need to make sure we take care of the whole child. But we are certainly looking at all the good aspects of good teaching, and we'll continue to do that as best as we can.
This is Heather Patchell. I just had a quick question for the eighth graders that are now at a different school, the ninth graders. How can they get those scores? Because I did not get my daughter's scores.
The eighth graders, we did get their scores, and they should have been mailed home. If you didn't, shoot me an email.
Yeah, so she doesn't attend Thomason High School.
Oh, it doesn't matter. We mailed it to their-
Okay, I just, so I didn't get hers. I got my son's.
Okay. We can get those to you.
Marie Eldridge. The small groups that you're talking about, are they going to work like the reading groups do in the classroom now?
A reading groups where?
At, you know, at each school.
Like at Center School?
Yeah, the kids are going to be grouped according to ability in the small groups.
Sometimes there's positives and negatives to homogeneous grouping, and there's positive and negatives to heterogeneous grouping. We do both. It's very important that we do both, especially for our low-ability learners. We want to make sure we give them an opportunity to be with higher-level students. But then there was also when you're focusing, like, you know, as in one on one skill, it's easier to have the homogeneous grouping where everybody's working on the same skill. So both.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And just for clarification, Jess, this is Francine Cross speaking. When the students are put into these small groups, it's because of how they scored or the data that we've received from either DS back or our district tests? Is that an accurate statement to me?
On a day-to-day basis, it is based on the day before. It's really good teaching practice that the teacher is assessing constantly in her classroom or his classroom. So if the teacher at the end of each class should know how many students are leaving that class without the learning target being successfully, you know, met. So that's the goal. And so at the end of the week and the middle of the week, teachers want to be checking in with small groups of students that have not met those learning targets so that they pretty much attack it quickly and not let it go further so that the student doesn't get further behind.
Okay. And then to just reemphasize your comparison of homogeneity and heterogeneity, I think it's important for me to ask if this is occurring. So if there's a student who, to use the more typical terms of, is a high-achieving student versus a low-achieving student, does that preclude them being a high-achieving student? Does that keep them from participating in these small groups? Or is there a honing in on the key areas that that student may still fall short or have a weakness in?
Well, the whole goal is never to hold back high-achieving students. So they should be moving forward regardless of where they are. And that can be done, it can be done on several levels, but in the classroom, it's usually done in a small group where students are doing accelerated work or they're doing enrichment work while the teacher is working on with the students who have not yet achieved the skill or the concept.
And if there's a high-achieving student who overall presents as a high achiever but is deficient in a particular area, will that student also be able to capitalize on the small groups?
That's what's great about workshop model in any reading class or math class is that it gives you the ability to have those focus groups with what the students need. And students get pretty used to working in that type of model once they're taught the protocols and, you know, all the rules attached to it. They're really good at it. And I think most teachers have who've worked with that model would agree.
Board members that remember the Blue Jays and the Blackbirds and those kinds of reading groups and the parents at home, I want to again give you an opportunity to emphasize the fluidity of these groups that there the students are not assigned in the same way that we might remember our reading groups as children, depending on our age, or other types of groupings. These are more fluid and based on assessments that are ongoing. Is that an accurate statement to me?
Yes, and also just to remind you that many of you have heard of our co-teaching classes going on as well. And so a co-teaching class, we don't have the special ed teacher sitting with a small group of special ed kids. That is not the way it is designed and should never look like that. Our students should be heterogeneous. They should be with different skill levels, and that's the way they're going to get access to the higher-level learning and standards. So when we have two teachers, two certified teachers in a room, now we really get a bonus because we get two small groups working at the same time with the accelerated group working alone for a little while. So if you could picture what that looks like, it's a powerful class. It's a class on steroids.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your information.
Thank you.
Julia, I can roll up with your report, please.
Epidemics. The 2022-2023 school year began on Wednesday, August 31st. All students came into the school to positive outlook on the school year ahead. Each grade had an assembly during the first two days of school to speak about expectations and ask questions. Students are excited to get involved and see old and new faces in the hall.
And then for clubs, as another year starts, clubs have began registration and are working and are seeking more members. Freshman students were presented with trifles that have all the different clubs informations as well as a signup sheet to increase participation. Student council members were there to answer any questions students had as well as guide them through the process of signing up. THS Student Council hosted a non-car wash where students took a shift to IGA to help raise money for the club. Students are eager to be involved and help out their community in a positive way.
For athletics, the fall sports season has begun with field hockey, girls soccer, boys soccer, and cross-country all being offered to students. Cross-country had a slow start to the season with their first race just last Wednesday, but all runners were excited to improve their numbers. The season for all of their sports started last Thursday with the field hockey team getting a big win against Nanawog, and the soccer teams both falling short. Both soccer teams did come out victorious on Saturday against Northwestern. All athletes are excited to be back out and playing with their classmates. Tomorrow's games are all against Mogo, and the cross-country team's racing against New Zatonic. However, the rain is looking like that might not happen.
And for special events, September 28th, the senior class will be attending the Biggie. Picture Day is also scheduled for Thursday, October 20th.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have my report. I have our 2022 CAE Board Recognition Award application. Can I have a motion over this?
Marie Eldridge, vote to accept and approve the CAE Board Recognition Award application as presented.
Matt Vellormer, second.
Francine, I'll show you the webinar last night. I have a few of our application so that we are aware of what we are voting on. And after the meeting, we're all going to sign this document. Okay. You're the only one this year that has to sign. Oh, sorry. I guess it's only me. All right. All those in favor? Aye. Repost? Upstand? Removed. The other item on our report is just an FYI that CAE was offering a parliamentary procedure for Boards of Education webinar on Wednesday, September 28th, from 12 to 1:15. And so if anybody wants to use their lunch break to tell us, please let Nicola know, and she will be happy to register you. Thank you. This is Cross. Your report, please.
Thank you. This is Francine Cross speaking. Before I give my report, I want to thank the board for their support of the CAE Board Recognition Award. We are a board of distinction. There are two levels of Board Award, and we have achieved the highest level for the last six years. So we have a lot to be proud of, and I'm glad we're going to continue in this vein. And I hope that we are considered a board of distinction again by CAE.
Marie Eldridge. How do we gain this? As a new member, I don't know what.
So there's a an application that's in this- So there's a, an application that's in this binder where they request evidence of actions that we've taken that prove that we're a board of distinction. So we provide them with that evidence. For example, one of the option, one of the things that we would have to do would be to prove that we update our policy on a regular basis or that we incorporate professional development into what we do as a board or that we cite policy or other laws in the work that we do. So when you look at our agenda and you see those little triangles or you see our goals at the top, these are things that are done by an exemplary board. So we are a board of distinction because our agendas, our minutes are used, like I made the point earlier to Beth, we don't have to put out the minutes that we put out. We don't have to make a connection to our videos that people can listen to the live discussion instead of seeing a typed summary of it or none at all. We are used as an example for other boards and it's a wonderful thing. It's a great thing to be proud of. So we will know by the end of October if we've received this distinction again. And then if we do receive it, then when we go to the CAPE CAPS conference, our board members are then honored with a plate to put on our continuous plaque and then we have a photograph taken and we're put into the CAPE newspaper.
Frank, try, we have a question. Can we get what each triangle means, like a list of that or is it all the same? Sometimes, you know, there's blue, green, yellow?
Yes. It's at the beginning. Should be at the beginning. The L is educate from our goal, from our mission. The blue means we are educating. The green means we are challenging and the yellow means we're inspiring. That's directly from our mission. So we're showing how each of those headers belong to or support our mission. And then if you look at each heading, you'll also see something, a little parenthetic note that'll say either a bylaw or a policy. So it shows, well, why do we establish a quorum? Well, bylaw such and such tells us why or why do we have public participation? This bylaw or policy tells us why. So it's all built into our agenda. That's just one small component of the seven different components that we have to prove evidence, hence why we have four inch binder.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for your interest. It's a, it's a fun thing to put together, isn't it, Michaelina? So my report begins with correspondence. They are clearly listed there, no need to highlight anything in that list. And I have reports that follow. The positivity, the COVID-19 positivity report and vaccination rate is still in existence at the state level, so I am continuing to provide that to the Board of Education. Under administrative reports for this month, our curriculum director has asked that we approve the following curriculum guides. Introduction to Spanish, grades seven and eight. Spanish one, grade nine. Spanish two, grade 10 through 12. Spanish three is listed as a grade 11. I ask that you vote to accept and approve the curriculum guides as presented.
Marie Eldridge, vote to accept and approve the curriculum guides as presented.
Matt Van Omer second.
Any questions or discussion?
Is the seventh and eighth grade Spanish planning on coming back because that's sorely missed?
There's nothing in the budget right now regarding that, but come January, when we talk about the budget, I'm sure it'll be another topic. We have our enrollment report, which is our. Excuse me. Oh, excuse me. Yes, we do need it. Excuse me. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Abstained. Motion carries. So sorry. We have our enrollment report, which you can see there that we update monthly on the first of the month. Our ceiling project at Center School is completed. And I am pleased to say that this board had set aside $347,400 for the project and we spent only $339,125. So we came under budget by 8275. So all of the, all of the lead that was in the paint that was on the surface of the interior of the ceiling has been both removed and the wood that, that it was adhered to has been encapsulated with a clear coat. So we can see all of that beautiful wood now. It looks fantastic. We also painted the beams and removed the curtain that used to be there. There was a, an iron box that hung when they divided the gym into a boys and girls gym. So we removed the iron curtain today.
Removal of the iron curtain is why I joined the Navy. Have we heard anything from our elected representatives at the state level about any monies? Has, I saw some emails traffic from you two, our legislators, our state senator and our state rep as far as getting some money back for this project?
I have reached out to both our state representative and our state senator in the area and I did receive back information to contact a particular individual who returned my request with, we're figuring it out. So there has been money set aside, but at this point in time, there's no way to access that money. So I have put in a recurring appointment in my calendar so that I poke at them every so many weeks to say, hey, where is this application so that we can ensure a place in line?
Sarah E. here. When are the students going to be able to use the gym again?
So that is not in my report here because we had a little issue during the rainstorm on Tuesday. So the gym was ready to be recoded, the gym floor was ready to be recoded. We waited until after we finished the ceiling and on the day of the heavy rain, they were screening the floor to rough it up so that we could put down the new coating. And water began seeping up through the cracks of the gym floor. Not large puddles, but enough where to the touch it would be wet. So we are now in the process of analyzing how and why water is under that floor. So to answer your question, until I know why and how and we can repair it so that it never happens again, I cannot give you a definitive date as to when we can get back into that gym, unfortunately. But we were anticipating being back in the gym this week if it hadn't been for that rainstorm.
The culvert that goes through Sanford goes underneath that gym because that massive water would go to the top of that culvert.
Yes, I've requested from the town, the specifications of all of the items, all the pieces of culvert, dry well, everything that's underneath the gym as well as the specs for the original gym. And we should have them by Friday. That should help us somewhat. We also scoped the downspouts that are cast iron that run under the gym and we today just cut into a section of the gym floor to see if we could see what's underneath the immediate surface of the floor. So there's, there's quite a bit of thickness there. There are multiple layers of subfloor underneath the gym floor that we step on inclusive of about eight inches of concrete. So it's a bit perplexing. We've had our insurer out. He came out today and his specialist came out, his flooring specialist came out, who happens to be the same company, represents the same company that was actually screening the floors for us. So we're in a good place insofar as insurance goes if we have an issue that we need to resolve. However, if the issue is compounded by some other dimension, then it is good that we save the $8,000 on the ceiling because we'll, we'll need some of that extra cash. You are correct, sir. So next item on my report is the tennis courts. I'm finishing up that report. So our last report is that no new actions have been taken related to where the tennis courts used to be, but a second application of the hydro seeding will occur this fall so that we should have nice thick grass come May of '23. We're very excited about that. We're also doing some investigative work on how we can cover some of the fencing, some of the chain link fencing so that it's a little more appealing to the larger field in the back by Sanford Field. And we're noticing that our neighbor has painted one of his buildings and cleaned up the area in and around that chain link fence. So there's a lot of neighborhood pride going on now that we've put down that grass. So we're very happy to have initiated that, that new change in the neighborhood.
Sarah E. here. I have another question. Are the kids able to use that now at recess?
We're trying to keep them off of it because we want that grass to take and in about a month or so, when we put the hydro seed on again, it'll be shut down until the spring. But we're not rushing out there and I know that it's being used by people in the weekends. We can't control that and it was used during the carnival. But there are some bald patches, so we want to make sure that we fill those in and let that grass grow and settle, kind of like we did up at Nystrom where we didn't let anyone on the field to play for a few months. Okay. Next is just a copy of the family handbook for our Little Bears University. That's our preschool program. That's there just as an FYI. And then also some information about our new CT sets, which is a new program that will manage, that's held in an individual education, individualized education plan or an IEP. We have no new grants this month and we do have a good number of fundraisers, but they do not require any action from the board. The largest section of my report is personnel. We had 11 new hires since our last board meeting. And five transfers. No reassignments, one resignation, no new retirements, no terminations or non-renewals. And we've had two new stipend placements since our last board meeting. I ask that the board vote to acknowledge my notification of personnel as I've presented it here.
Marie Eldridge, vote to acknowledge the superintendent's notification of personnel, specifically new hires, transfers, retirements, resignations, renewals, stipends per policy 4112, 4212. Personnel, certified, non-certified, appointment and conditions of employment as presented.
Matt Van Omer second.
Questions or discussion? Have we posted the varsity girls basketball coaching position yet? Okay, but it was posted. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Yes. So we have, because it's a teachers' union position, we posted according to the contract. So there's so many days that it's only posted internally and then it rolls out to the general public. So if no one in-house is qualified or wants it, then we can hire someone from the outside. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor? Sorry.
Question, it's Frank Trigid. I don't know if I can ask this question, but I'm asking it. During soccer games at Nystroms, is the track shut down? Because other schools.
I don't have the answer to that question, Frank.
I'd like, I could find the answer to that.
So hang on one second. I want to make sure that everyone can hear what Principal Bruci is saying. So the track is shut down during the game technically.
So like Saturday, we had a four or five hour game, girls and boys. So the track is shut down to residents. Is that correct? Because other towns, people walk around the track while their games are going on. So during a Saturday, we're going to shut the track down for four or five hours for a game? What about the rec teams? Do they shut the track down also?
I don't know about the rec teams. We don't manage them.
Because basically the track will be shut down the whole Saturday. Well, if you've got four or five people and elderly people, they want to walk on the rubber track instead of the tar. I'm just.
Plus the parents standing.
Yeah, the parents are standing around the fence. You've got to constantly like, excuse me, people with strollers and stuff like that. So I mean, it makes an issue if we're going to shut a track down for five hours that was made for residents. So.
Are students or residents too?
No, I know.
Okay.
But it could be used the same. If there was a track, I mean, I could understand, but during a soccer game, what's, if they're outside that fence and they're, I mean, outside track, we're only talking 12 inches that can get hit with a soccer ball either way.
I don't have the license, I have a question, but we close it. I don't know if the rec department closes it for their games.
Okay. So we, so we, the school doesn't own the track though?
The rules of play are what we have to abide by. So if the C I A C has a rule, if our league has a rule, if there's typical safety practices that we need to make sure happen, then we abide by the rules while using that track.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bruci, could you clarify? Didn't you say that it's just the inside track that people are not allowed to walk up? So the gravel track that goes a lot of people are allowed on that? But it's not blacktop. It's not hard paved blacktop. Clarification, but for clarification, part of the track is open, is that what is verified? And part of the track is closed and that there could be bystanders disrupting the pattern of the open section of track? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, walkway. Okay. Got it. So the facilities are down and Sanford Field, we can't have no walking or door in right field. Out of commission, out of use because it's for us. Yes. So that I think is a clear answer again for the people that are at home that probably can't hear John. The, when the field is used through facials use or building use form and it's deemed our field, then we have the field and the public would not have access to the field. So if there are areas in and around the field where if the public accessed it, they could get hurt, that is our field, it's shut down. But if it's not being used by, it would be the same as if you were to borrow, you know, ask for the use of that gazebo or covered area. You can't just sit there and have a hot dog. That's being booked by a member of the public who booked that area. It's the same. I don't want to add my point as that, Frank, because I can't do too much about what you're asking. When there's a soccer game, you can't. Yes. Just like you can't walk in left, right or center field during a baseball or softball game. Okay, I think we've gotten to the topic here. The next one is our personnel. And we had a second, so we'll have to take a vote here, people, please. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Abstained. Motion carries. Report, Mrs. Cross. Okay, we have one employee seeking family medical leave and we happily have two interns slash student teachers with us, both at Blackrock School this year. We're very happy to have them. We have no field trips needing the board's attention and we have a request to dispose some books from the preschool. That does not require any action from the board. That concludes my report at this time. Thank you. Moving on to our committee reports. We have our budget audit committee report, please. Yes, please, Mrs. Cross. The budget audit committee met last Wednesday and presented the business manager's report, which is found online tomorrow and will also, the link will also be sent out to parents and staff. So I ask that the board accept and approve the business and finance report and the expenditures listed above and in that report per policy 3432, 3433 as presented.
Eldridge, vote to accept and approve the business and finance report and expenditures per policy 3432, 3433. Business non-instructional operations, budget and expense report, annual financial statement as presented for June 2022 and July 2022.
Van Omer second.
I'd like to point out that the motion is, the one that's been provided is pointing out June and July, but the report that we are approving is August. So I ask that you amend your motion to eliminate June and July's reference and put in August instead. instead.
Would you like to amend the motion to include August 2022 and take out June and July?
Matt Van Omer, second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Policy carries.
Matt Van Omer, we had no presentations, no discussion items, no first reads or second reads. We're just taking two action items this month, so I make a motion to vote and accept and approve policy 3281 and policy 3542.43 as presented.
Ray Eldridge, second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Matt Van Omer, I make a motion to adjourn.
Ray Eldridge, second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much for coming. Have a good night.